Order the March 12, 2024, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Okay, Jean, can we take roll?
Chris Cosaurus.
Here.
Sean Kevlin.
Here.
John Simon.
Here.
Hey, Tom Gober.
I'm here.
Peter Boynton.
Hi.
Jim O'Witt, Wilkins.
Here.
Okay, everyone here and accounted for, nice. Okay, discussion item 40, Flagship Drive. Conservation Commission's request for the board to consider revocation of the site plan review of special permit granted to DWT Holdings LLC to allow for the construction of 15,100 square foot single-story metal building with associated parking, landscaping, utilities, and stormwater management design at 40 Flagship Drive. Jean, what's going on?
All right, so you may recall shortly after this was permitted, the contractors started to clear the site. Amy and I had a preconstruction meeting. We confirmed all the erosion control. They had a site monitor. They were permitted in September. They started clearing the site. And in July, we had a tremendous downpour that he lost control of the site. It totally went over the erosion control. Sediment went down Flagship Drive into catch basins, onto other people's properties, and into wet ones. So Conservation Commission immediately took jurisdiction, and several enforcement orders have been issued. Initially, great response to those enforcement orders, got the site stabilized, got the catch basin and everything cleaned out. The basin to the lower end of the site was repaired and stabilized, but unfortunately enforcement orders continued because he needs to file an NOI now that the other wet ones have been impacted. And John, you look very confused.
No, no, is this the one on the side of the hill?
Yep.
Yeah, I could by there all the time because that's where my grandson plays hockey, but they're selling the property, so they're clearly not building anything.
Apparently, he's put it for sale. I've had a couple of calls. But I think once they learn of the history and that it's under enforcement orders, I don't think anybody's pursued the sale.
Yeah.
If they were to sell it, it's under a cease and desist at this point through the Building Department, and he's being fined very seriously through the Conservation Commission. So what the Commission wrote you a letter, they asked that you revoke the permit. Our bylaw doesn't allow to revoke a site plan approved permit. It runs with the land. I did some research. The city of North Adams actually recently had this similar debate. Their town council provided a opinion that wasn't exactly clear, so they decided to go with the, given it's not clear, to go ahead and put in an ordinance that allowed for revocation of the site plan. And it was more of a wait-and-see approach.
But don't we have a time clock on when it has to be done?
Yes. In this, in this permit, it was conditioned that clearing of the trees would commence the permit. And so it's certainly been substantial commencement because the whole lot has been cleared. So that triggered the start of it.
I mean, this is the, I think, just about the first time I could ever remember in my time in the planning board where it would be within our practical rights, whether within our legal rights, to revoke the bond and clean the site up. Because, I mean, that's what we have a bond for is to make a mess of the site. That's exactly what happened here.
So that's what triggered this conversation. In January, we got notice that they, their bond was a surety bond and has been canceled by the insurance agent, so he's not paying it. So that's what started this conversation. Now that the bond has been canceled, can you revoke the permit?
What, so the bond was canceled before we could?
It was just January of this year the bond was canceled.
Can't, but, so that means we don't have the ability to take the bond money?
Right, but the site has been stabilized.
Right.
It's been stabilized for a year.
So it's definitely not in compliance with the, the bond is a condition of the permit, though, right?
Yeah.
Hmm, so generally, I don't think we have the right to revoke a permit. Forty, Section 40A doesn't give us that right. But if there, that's an interesting.
But if they're not in compliance with material terms of our decision, wouldn't they?
Well, then they're not, I mean, technically, then they're violating the zoning and the, because they don't have the right to do anything there because they're not in compliance with zoning, so the building inspector would be the one to generally enforce that. The bond thing troubles me, though, because then we have no recourse as this board.
So if we're going to begin again, I wouldn't approve a building permit until the bond was reestablished.
Right.
I mean, yeah, well, leverage is the building permit, right? Yeah.
Yeah, because they've only done site work, they're only declaring, which was under a permit.
Okay. I mean, I don't think legally we have any real options. I mean, we, the options generally are you can come back in, you can modify the permit, right? But I don't know that that gets us anywhere.
Yeah.
So I think at this point, it's really up to the building inspector. I mean, we could write a letter to the building inspector saying, hey, they're not in compliance, enforce the, enforce the permit, but that's already happening, so.
There's a cease and desist on that.
Right, so, okay, so, I mean, I think we kind of can keep our eye on it and thank the Conservation for doing their job and bringing it to our attention, but I don't think there's anything legally we can.
I, I do think the, the bonding thing we've got to look into.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I've always sort of like, you as a lawyer would understand it better than I, but we've always had trouble with bonds.
Right.
If somebody could, you know, the whole purpose of a bond is to ensure that you're going to be covered, and if somebody could revoke a bond just by not paying the premium, that's a real problem. I mean, you know, maybe we have to go for cash bonds.
Yeah.
Legally, we can't. We have to take it if it's in proper surety form. And for a long time, we didn't have any surety bonds. It was only over the last couple of years that people started.
I wonder if there's a way, if someone gives us a surety bond, that we can get a alert before it's canceled and even, you know, or do something about.
The surety bond, the surety.
Right. Do something about it.
Yeah. I mean, going back to the bond thing, I mean, this is, I've kind of hoped for this a little bit. I always think, I always thought they were a little light on bonds in general, especially in light of this. I mean, I'd imagine, I mean, did, so did, did the permit holder, did they, did they stabilize the site or did we stabilize the site?
The permit holder.
Okay.
They wondered enforcement orders through Conservation, so.
Because I'd imagine that if they just threw their hands up, canceled surety bond, didn't stabilize the site, they'd be a lot more than 10 grand, I'd imagine, right? So I just, I don't know, I think this is something that we need to really look into. I mean, because if someone could look and literally just cancel a surety bond and then we have no recourse, I mean, I think it's a pretty big hole in our process, right?
Yeah, I agree. So I think, I think, I don't know if there's counsel or if there's someone who can give us advice about how we can better enforce surety, because like, a regular bond, we have the cash.
I think what was missed here is, it was a contractor's yard. It was a laid-down area for trucks and equipment, a small office, and bay doors. So the building itself, that piece of it wasn't a lot, but what was missed is the significant, the sloping and the work that needed to be done. He was a general contractor himself. He does this type of work, and it was just, didn't see it coming.
Okay, yeah, I, but I think there's got to be a way that if, if someone puts a surety bond, either we have to raise it if it's a surety bond, or that we have to somehow get some sort of way that we can get notification as the protected, I mean, we're the protected interest. So I would feel like the bond company would give us notice before and so that we could deal with it, even if we had to pay the premium ourselves and add that to him as a fine or something like that, you know? Because it should be a low amount. That's the whole purpose of a surety bond is that it's cheaper. Okay, we can look into that. Okay, all right, so, let's go to the next item. 315 Turnpike Street, Merrimack College in Greystar, request for minor modifications to the site plan to show on the attached corner development project at Merrimack College. Plans revised on February 20, 2024. Design overlays and review of the potential for construction of an additional travel lane on Andover Street, Elm Street. Jeffs?
Jeff Doggett, Merrimack College, great to be back. We're going to cover a couple of things here. The most important to me is the last time I was at this podium, we had a long conversation about the third, a possible third travel lane for traffic that would leave Andover heading on to 114. And the conversation, I think is fair to say, was, is the institution and the planning board making a decision of moving forward a project that we might all regret because it negates the opportunity for the third lane in the future? And my assurance standing here then was, I know enough to know that I didn't believe that it was, but what we actually needed to do was help Mass DOT get there, so we all could feel good that that was the case. Right? And we all agreed to that. It was a condition of, of the vote. We, Merrimack, hosted Mass DOT to do a public hearing on the campus. Peter was there with me in lockstep, and I think, I think between Peter and I, we did a pretty good job of making sure that this was something that was really important. There were a lot of neighbors there, both from Andover and North Andover, and I think that they too made the case that this was a really important thing to make sure we were not foreclosing on. As a matter of fact, I think the argument was that it should be part of the 114 redesign. Mass DOT, I think, was pretty good in that conversation. They were really stuck on, you know, at this late in the game, how do we have the resources to be able to design this? I offered as Merrimack to do that for them. That's why Jeff is here, because VHB worked with the Mass dot team. And I'm, I'm happy to say that, that I think we made the right decision, right? That I think we'll, we'll cover this as much as we can. I would urge the planning board at some point to get Mass DOT to come in and talk about what they intend to do. I can't speak to that, although I think they've become convinced that this is a worthwhile endeavor. But from our perspective, this is still a project that works for us with the third lane. In some respect, it altered a little bit of where we were going to put generators and things like that, and that's, that's the second part of this presentation. But for us, and Jeff will walk through it, but I think as some people know, my time at Merrimack is slowly coming to an end, but this was really important for me to be here to, to put this part of the, of the project to bed. And, and with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff, and the Jeffs can answer any questions you may have. He'll also, once he's done with the lanes, then we'll cover the two minor modifications on the site.
Okay. I would just add to Jeff, Jeff wants, Connor, that I agree that I think the meeting that followed our meeting at Merrimack went very well. We engaged everybody, Jeff two included, and agreement on how to cobble together, what are some next steps. So really glad to see this coming to this point at least. Thank you.
All right, I'll take over. Jeff two from VHB. So I can, we can hop in and, and yeah, as Jeff said, the Mass DOT GPI design team was extremely helpful through this process as well and happy to work together with us. So if we can, we can scroll down, this is kind of what Jeff hit on, just flagging where we left off on the decision of the original approvals last fall, and just kind of our summary Jeff ran through on kind of what's happened from the last time we were here to, to today. So wanted to show you guys a couple of slides in, in a pecking order here. All of them include kind of the proposed corner development project. This is, as was carried in our design, to the current or existing conditions of Andover Street. South to the right, north to the, to the left, so one southbound lane, one northbound lane that turns into two straights and a, and a short right turn around the corner there. Just some highlights on setbacks to the building. The, the black is the property line, 33 feet. 45 feet is the proposed building to the face of curb at Andover Street, and 39 feet is the face of building to the back of existing sidewalk, which sits along the roadway now. So this was the intent of the project that would start construction this, this year. Once the 114 corridor project came along, this was the intent of where we had left off. This is the original design, so it shows one southbound lane on Andover Street, one through lane heading north, one expanded left turn lane, and the slip lane to the right, pretty consistent with the current condition. And then just some highlights on the change of the setbacks there, obviously getting a little closer to the building, no changes to the, to the property line. So this, this last slide, after our coordination with, with Merrimack, Mass DOT, and the GPI team is, is where we landed as part of our study and the kind of collective recommendation between, between our parties on, you know, taking some of the space on the Merrimack property. We would propose that as a, as a permanent easement. That would allow them to expand the curb in Andover Street to create a third turn lane for the, the slip lane heading south on 114.
So Jeff, this is what you guys came up with and are, have pitched to Mass DOT?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And yeah, as Jeff said, we, you know, we can't speak for Mass DOT, but our, our understanding is they are planning to incorporate this as part of their project, but that's, that's part of Mass DOT's efforts moving forward.
And if I could, just, just for a second, what was, what we thought and what was important is if you just, if you see on the, on the design, you'll see a, a line with, you know, little dots along the way, that's the fence line that currently exists. For those of us that were out on the sidewalk, right, there's a, a white fence line. The sidewalk, right, that will go loop around the corner is still on the outside of that fence line.
Correct.
So from a day-to-day life of the campus and a day-to-day life of the community, there really isn't any change. We're not moving a fence line backwards or anything like that. We're coming right up to it, but that's just the walking path, right? So, so from our perspective, as we, as we thought all along, we could fit this in, which, again, I think is a great benefit to everybody.
Okay.
And anytime, is it possible to act on the suggestion that we ask DOT to come in and talk to us about that?
Yeah, so why don't we, yes, I was, so I think, I was gonna, I think we should discuss that at the end.
Okay.
And potentially take a vote on it, but yes, let's, let's do it at the end of, at the end of this.
Yeah, yeah, maybe just another, the, the roadway extents there. This is, this is the latest concept, just with some highlights to what, to what Jeff was speaking. The, the fence line, you can see is the dark line just highlighted in yellow as it stands now that doesn't move in, in this scenario.
And a reminder for the slip lane, is there, is there a traffic light there?
Not for the vehicles turning right, no, no. They would, they would just yield to oncoming traffic heading southbound.
And what, but there's pedestrian crossing there?
There is, yep, yep. And that's, that's tied to the shared use path. That's part of the 114 corridor project and what they've also proposed in this concept, and, and we've accounted for allocating even additional space for that shared use path to continue down Andover Street to Flaherty Way.
Okay, yeah, I think I'd want to talk to, so I think that the extra lane is great. The only concern I have is if now, that gives you kind of extra time to, if there's not traffic, to kind of build up speed, so I just worry about just making sure that those pedestrians are taken care of, whether it's just, probably just signage or something like that, just for pedestrians or flashing lights or pedestrian crossing lights or something like that. I think it, the extra lane would really help with the traffic situation and that kept queuing and generally be a safety help, but if, in times of slow tra, or no traffic, you might actually get more time because you're in that lane longer. I just want to.
It, it may very well be stop controlled, but we, we can.
Yeah, can talk to DOT about that, that's fine.
One thing from the thing you showed before, you showed the distances, the revised distances.
Yes.
That's 23 feet from the property line?
That is 23 feet from the back of the shared use path to the building.
What's the?
The 34 is from the building to the face of curb.
But what's it from the building to the property line?
33 feet. So where, where this was discussed with Mass DOT was not presenting this not as a modification to the right of way, but essentially the shared use path that does extend on to Merrimack property would be processed through an access easement.
Yeah.
With, with the intent of keeping the property line where it is now.
Okay. Okay.
Why is that back to 33 feet?
Yeah, that's a little bit what I was, I looked at, I said 23, I said, that's what's moving, yeah.
And then the, I could go back just one second, Jean. So the aqua color there is just that part of the property that is in, is where the shared use space will be on ours, right? So, okay? Take it away.
All right. Might go it up one more, Jean, sorry. Sure, sure. So as Jeff mentioned, part, part two of this are some minor modifications to the site plan, in part from some of the ongoing coordination at Andover Street, as well as some ground floor level programming updates as we were refining the design that wanted us to look at, at tweaking a couple entry locations to the building, but making sure that we were addressing any grading and stormwater design updates accordingly. So just a quick summary table in the bottom left there just gives a quick look. No changes to the dimensional requirements, the zoning criteria, anything reviewed as part of the, this EPA process. Setbacks, no change to building height, building footage, no change to site impervious area, and no change to the proposed parking from the design reviewed last fall. What we're trying to show here, you can see kind of the red, the red outlines beneath is the previous, previously permitted design, and the, what's colored and shown in black is the proposed modification. So kind of see some minor adjustments within the site to the walkways. The other piece, as Jeff mentioned, was the, the utility yard on the south side of Building Two has been removed, along with the driveway up to it, and those are proposed as being consolidated to one location over by Building One. We wanted to try to get as efficient as we could with those locations and consolidate the yards, given the, just given the nature of this site and.
Right, and, and the reality is, is when we designed this before, we put a shared use path on this side, on the college side of that road, all the sidewalk work is on the other side. So our basic premise was, let's not have as much, you know, of the mechanics, like literally right outside, everyone's now walking path. So, so for both an efficiency and just a sheer enjoyment, we decided it was better to pick a side and, and move it over. You want to keep going?
Sure. So from a grading drainage and stormwater management standpoint, really the modification, previously we had three subsurface systems, one that was shown about in the elbow of Building Two. Based on these, these updates and now in relocating the, the exterior equipment yard, we're able to utilize the space south of Building Two. So we relocated one system to the other side of Building Two. The other two systems, minor modifications to the, the footprints, and we actually increased the storage. One thing we wanted to make sure is if we came back with any modifications, the only thing we came back was better than we presented before. So there is, there's an additional reduction in stormwater peak runoff rates for at least the 25-year for a few of the storm events, and that table there is included just to show. So we did increase the, the stormwater management systems as previously proposed to make sure we were, we were only making that better. Otherwise, grading updates were adjusted just to address the, the new entry locations to the building. And wanted to include a, a landscape plan of the updated site, consistent with the original as far as species and locations, but obviously updated to match the, the revised layout. No significant change to, to quantities there and wanted to emphasize the same areas we previously had, so just wanted to include that.
Okay.
That's.
That's it.
Happy to.
Because of the stormwater proposed changes, this whole package has been sent to Huzley Boynton for review. She's responded with comments. Jeff responded today and can answer those. My read of it is he's, he's answered everything that she's questioned, but I don't have that final, and we'll turn around yet.
Okay. And any question in your mind that these would be considered minor modifications?
No, in her initial responses, because I asked her a budget to do this, she says, it certainly appears to be minor, but I just want to check the calculations.
Okay.
So even she put in writing to me that what they were proposing, she deemed minor.
Okay, so why don't we do first, so request for minor modifications, so I, ask for a motion to approve the changes as, or deem them as minor modifications and allow them to be approved by the planning director upon sign-off from the third-party consultants.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Say, John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. DOT, I think it would be a good idea to get DOT in. Anybody have any problems with that and sound good? So Jean, can we put an invite to DOT, I'd say for a, an update on the 114 project and specifically as some additional insight as to the, the additional travel lane? But I mean, I think it just, it's been a while since they've been in front of us, maybe just a general, just also a general update as to the 114 project at their, you know, doesn't have to be the next meeting, just at their convenience sometime in the next month or two would be great. If they want to appear virtually, that's okay, too.
All right, so I'll write this up and inform the decision.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. I appreciate having been before you.
All right.
Good luck, Jeff, and thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think Jeff one's better than Jeff the elder, so I was.
Well, I'll take whatever I can get. I appreciate it. Have a great one. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Jean, can we do 335 Willow and 351 Willow together?
Each has a unique condition, so one condition to sound study and one condition to a parking letter, which are both included and both.
Both met?
Both met.
Okay, so 335 Willow Street Muffin 3X LLC, 351 Willow Street Muffin Realty Trust. All right, Jean, why don't you tell us what's going on?
So 351 was permitted back in 2015.
Okay.
335 was 2019. They've both been fully constructed. Peter, I'm not sure you were even on the board in 15, but John, you were here. The fake, the original Baker Joy, the main building, added a parking lot. There was some concern about both noise as well as potentially headlights impacting Route 125. So initially, there was a condition, a year after the CO, to present evidence that there's been no impact on 125. Rather than go that route, they actually put a fence up along the new parking lot and kept the fence on top of the berm that was, that was proposed to be taken off. So I've not heard any complaints about noise or headlights or anything like that. I did go by the site today. It, it seems to be intact. It's no complaints for noise. The complaints had been coming from Andover residents on Kathleen Drive.
Right, yes, exactly, yeah.
In 2019, they purchased the adjacent building and proposed a very small addition for both to that. At the time, because we knew of concerns about noise, we conditioned a baseline sound study before construction and one after the CO. And again, the results of that sound study are in, and there's been no impact.
Any neighbor complaints that you're aware of?
Nothing, nothing since that time, and the Board of Health worked with them all through these sound studies and actually was in the neighborhood, like while these studies were being conducted.
Fantastic. All right, can I get a motion to release the bonds for 335 Willow Street and 351 Willow Street with any interest?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good job.
Thanks, Bob.
Continued public hearings, 189 Willow Street.
So very, well, as a reminder, the hearing opened December 19th. They've continued every meeting since. Today, I received another continuance requesting to continue until April 2nd. I think they're trying to get a sense of their appeal to DEP. I, I have no idea how long that's going to take.
I'd like them to come in then, on, at least come in on the April date, because I don't think we can just keep continuing it without any information. At some point, I think we need to take a vote, or we need to get an update, or we need to know what's happening.
It's the same vote they were in last time, so if you remember, they opened in April, and then you requested them to withdraw without prejudice.
Right.
First meeting in November, but nothing was heard between the, with the six months or so.
Right, so I, if we're in the same boat and not getting any answers, and there are issues before DEP or the Concom or whoever are going to take another six months, I don't want to keep this on the agenda for six months. I don't think that's fair to Butters or fair to us, fair to the consultants. I just don't think that's really the right way to go about it. So at a minimum, I'd like them to at least come in, and if they want continuances going past this next date, then tell us why and what's going on. So continued until April 2nd, but we expected them to either to, to be here on that date. Otherwise, we'll. we'll take whatever action we deem appropriate in terms of the hearing. Okay. Annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendment articles, public hearings, MBTA Community Multifamily Housing Overlay District, MBTA Community Multifamily Housing Overlay District zoning map amendment. And do we have a new public hearing? Yep, 115, oh, okay, hold on. Hold on, hold on, so let's strike that. So, the annual town meeting zoning bylaw, I want to do those and the citizen petition bylaws all at the, kind of at the same time. So, can we do all those now, or do we have someone? I don't, do we have 115 Winter Street? All right, let's do that first, I don't want to make you guys wait. 115 Winter Street, Adrian and Adam Ramos, application for a watershed special permit under Article Four, Part Five, Article Ten, Section 195, 10.7 of the zoning bylaw, to authorize construction of an in-ground pool and patio partially within the 150 non-disturbance zone and within the 409 discharge zone of the watershed protection district property located in the R1 zoning district. Hi.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thor Akerly from Williams &amp; Sprages. It's nice to see you all again under better circumstances than I saw you last. I'm here tonight representing Adam and Adrian Ramos, the property owners of 115 Winter Street. This is, of course, a watershed special permit application for the proposed construction of an in-ground swimming pool and associated hardscapes within a portion of the 150-foot non-disturbance zone, and in this case, 400-foot non-discharge buffer zone, associated with a wetland that borders the majority of the perimeter of the property that you see there on the aerial imagery.
Just a draw for one second, to provide the locus. This is a little tricky part of Winter Street. So, this is the subject lot. This is South Radford Street. Winter runs through but does not connect to Grapevine Road. So, this is Bridle Path, Grapevine Road. Winter Street is not accessible all the way up to here. It dead-ends into this house. And so, it's been permitted in the past, the house construction was...
Messina.
Yeah. So, that's the lot, and the reason it's subject to 150 non-disturbance is because these lots were created after 1994. So, they did subdivide, and this is the wetland that was proximal to. Sorry, Bob?
Thank you, Jean. Correct, there were three lots that were subdivided. I believe it was the Messina, Messinas that owned it. This was one of the lots that was created back then. As you can see, the 150-foot non-disturbance zone comes up quite high on the property, basically directly behind the house. We tried to keep the pool and hardscapes as close to the dwelling as possible. I believe we held a 10-foot offset from the deck that you see there behind the house to the pool to maintain some safety for the kids. But other than that, the pool is about 680 square feet or so, and the patio would be bordered by a stone infiltration trench that would pitch from the patio to that trench. We did provide, as we always do, an operations and maintenance contract for, or plan for the trench, as well as the pool equipment on the property. That is summarized in the revised letter that was sent to you all a week or so ago. And we did just recently respond to comments from Horsley and Witten. I believe we've satisfied all of their comments, but we are still waiting for a final sign-off from Janet Bernardo. Sounded like she was away until tomorrow, so we did not get a final written response from her. As Jean probably made you guys aware, we are applying for a variance because the structure is proposed within the non-disturbance zone through the ZBA for a permanent structure within that 150-foot buffer zone. But as you can see, the property is quite limited in the options for where to site a pool. And it is important to note that, of course, the pool and associated hardscapes are all proposed within existing lawn directly behind the house. There's no vegetation proposed to be disturbed, no tree cutting. And there are erosion controls proposed around the entire perimeter of the work area in the form of a mulch sock and steel fence. We are on the top of a hill there, so erosion is definitely of some concern during construction until the site's stabilized. And construction matting would be used along the construction entrance off the driveway to help eliminate any sediment breach in the erosion controls as well. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or address any concerns.
The ZBA opens next Tuesday. They also have a meeting next Tuesday for the new permanent structure within the non-disturbance zone.
Okay.
So, how many feet from the, is it from the edge of the wetlands, this structure?
I believe it was, did we show a setback on the plan? So, I believe it was about 130 feet.
Okay, is that the pool itself or just the edge of the structure? I'm just trying to get a...
The pool itself, but the erosion controls are probably an additional 10 feet off of the pool in the closest location to the wetland. So, suppose 120 feet approximately.
Okay, so Jean, where do we stand? Are we waiting for ZBA and waiting for peer review?
The stormwater review was really clean. I mean, I 100% expect that the final sign-off will come when Janet gets back. I actually drafted a decision, if you wanted to consider it tonight, I think it makes more sense to wait till the second, for the ZBA to at least open the hearing. In the past, we've conditioned no building permit until we get evidence that they've approved it, but by April 2nd, I think we have a much better sense.
All right, so I, I'm going to actually leave this to other board members. I don't have an actual conflict, but I have had Ms. Ramos at my house for political events, so I think there could be an appearance of a conflict, so I don't, I'm not going to vote on this one. So, I'd leave it to other board members to decide, do you want to vote on a decision tonight? Do you want to wait till the ZBA? How do people want to...
I mean, I would prefer to wait because it's pretty material. I mean, fact of the thing that you can't do anything unless they approve it. I'm still trying to figure out how they'll justify it, but that's a different story.
If the lot hadn't been subdivided, and it was prior to 94, they wouldn't be for the ZBA, but the fact is, it was, and they are before. That's fine, and so Chris would become an eligible voter?
Chris can be an eligible voter for it, yeah.
So, all of the normal things that we do where there's a pool, is our consultant looked at them and passed muster on them.
Yeah, so the revisions to the plan, based on her recommendation, was to add the steel fence to supplement the mulch sock, add the matting, the construction matting to help stabilize the site. And the O&amp;M was revised, revised to include dechlorination of the water prior to being pumped down into the filtration system. And all the other things were already in the O&amp;M plan, because Thor has recently permitted a pool within the watershed on Glenoah Circle.
We've done a few recent, in the past couple of years, actually, yeah.
And so, the O&amp;M plan's become pretty standard.
Peter, any specific concerns about the area?
Just to highlight that it is very close to the lake. We know that the property itself where the pool will be built is just about 130 feet to the wetland. Of interest to me is, this wetland is connected by a stream directly to the lake. The distance from the point on the wetland closest to the house to the lake via the stream is just one-quarter mile. That's very close, and the fact that it's connected by a stream to the lake, instead of just filtering through the ground, it's like having an express lane from that location into the drinking water supply. It's a direct line. So, it's just, you know, John, as you were saying, the normal things we do, we want to make sure they're done, because it's not just the quarter-mile from the lake, it's quarter-mile via a stream which carries anything very quickly.
So, seems we want to get the sign-off on our usual conditions from the peer review, and have ZBA, you know, do what they need to do to make sure that this is in compliance with our zoning bylaws, and then we can, should be able to vote after that.
So, continue for a second. They don't have to come next one.
Okay, sounds good.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So now, we'll do all our town meeting zoning bylaw amendments. So, let's start with MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing Overlay District and corresponding zoning map amendment. Jean, what hearing number are we on?
What hearing number?
Yeah, is this our...
For the MBTA Communities, the second hearing, and the other one opens tonight.
Okay, so, let's start with our MBTA Communities, second, second hearing. Have we had any public comment that has been received?
No.
Is there anyone, members of the public, that would like to make public comment about the MBTA Zone Multifamily Housing Overlay District? I see none. Okay, anything we need to address, Jean?
Yeah, so since the last meeting, Town Council did weigh in on the quorum of a vote.
Okay.
And as it was drafted previously, she determined that it would be a two-thirds supermajority vote. And so, there's red lines proposed tonight, that she's revised her legal opinion based on these red lines, that it would be a simple majority, compliant with the Housing Act.
Okay.
And so, the vast majority are just to really hammer home that any development project plan would have to have a residential component. It can have mixed use, but it has to come forward with a residential component for multifamily, and the two, the two uses that we proposed are townhouse and multifamily-only.
I mean, it seems like that was the intent all along of what we wanted. I mean, this wasn't supposed to be used for something where you could just build commercial, so...
Yep, and the rest of them are not material. Little bit of wordsmithing. The only other one I thought was somewhat material to you would be the, on page nine, where we talk about the establishment of the map. She's recommended, so a 19.5 map establishment, the town and north end of a zoning map, will be amended in accordance with the passage of this Article 19 at town meeting, which means, in her opinion, the independent map amendment article is not necessary.
Okay.
And even if you wanted to do two, her opinion is, the map amendment would also be simple majority, but if you wanted to just do one...
So, it's been our practice in the past to do two.
Yeah.
She's suggesting that this would be an appropriate approach on all zoning articles?
Not specifically, but...
But can we, I mean, we have, we have another one coming up.
Yep, what they're suggesting for that, for this, she said this is how we did it in law.
Okay. Okay, well, can we ask? Well, I'll ask when we do the next hearing. Okay, all right. Any board member questions or comments?
So, just one more thing to add. As we've said, we've sent it to the Office of Economic Living Housing and Livable Communities, and they're doing a pre-application review to ensure compliance. We've also, just this week, sent it off to the AG's office. From their perspective, as you know, they approve all zoning bylaws usually after town meeting, but she's said she'll get to it as soon as possible and send Town Council a permit.
Okay, let's continue that then until March 12? No, it is March 12th. April, is it April 2nd is our, is that our next hearing?
No, March 19th.
Or next week? March 19th.
Will be the third hearing.
Okay, continue until March 19th.
Do you guys have anything to add?
Yeah, Andrew, Ian?
No. Keep it even.
Okay, fantastic. March 19th. All right, citizen petition warrant article, James Warden, Historic Barn Overlay District, Historic Barn Overlay District zoning map amendment.
And I'm going to recuse myself.
Please do. All right, Jean, tell us about, has this been submitted to the town clerk with the requisite signatures?
It is.
Okay.
Signatures were certified.
Fantastic.
The warrant closed yesterday.
Okay.
The warrant is on the support agenda for tomorrow night. There are two placeholders for the citizen petition articles. One was the bylaw amendment itself, and one was the map amendment.
Yep.
So, the bylaw amendment, as far as I can see, it's intact for what you reviewed at the last meeting, so the whole narrative, they had to convert onto the citizen petition paperwork and submit it.
Since this is technically the beginning of a new public hearing, could you gentlemen identify yourselves, and then just tell us about this, tell us about this petition? I know you've been here and you've discussed it with us, but if people are just watching for the first time, this may be the first time they're hearing about it, so if you could tell us what kind of drove you to create the citizen petition, what it entails, and what, you know, what you're looking to get out of this, what the purpose is?
James Warden and 84 Academy Word and...
Peter Boynton, 320 Stevens.
Okay, tell us about your petition, please.
Yeah, so, quick summary is, this petition, which has nothing to do with what a homeowner can do in their property presently, and all the controls and zoning under R1s and R3s, but it's only for a very specific narrow commercial use defined as, you know, renting or leasing that space to someone other than the homeowner, to do a very narrow amount of work in a historic barn in the old center that is very non-obtrusive and not noticeable by the surroundings or the community or the bucolic setting that we want to protect. And those uses are art and creative activities, prototyping, light office, but not more than two cars can be parked, and they should never be parked on the street, and ideally out of sight. And any use like this has to be, has to have a special permit from the planning board applied for and granted.
All right, so let's go, let's just go back a little bit, so...
Can I just add a little?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, sort of the purpose of this idea of using a historic barn is, if the, if the structure is never used, it tends to deteriorate. So, it gives a purpose to a historic barn beyond what a homeowner might have. And it gives an opportunity for a homeowner to have perhaps a modest revenue from this limited use to help in maintaining the historic nature of that structure. And the limitations include no noise, no fumes, and a host of other limits that are detailed in the description, so it's a very narrow use.
And can you, can you just tell us about, I know we talked about it before at a previous meeting, just what kind of brought you to this? There is a specific...
Yes.
Business or idea innovation that you guys had in mind, correct, to use in a specific place? Can you tell us about that?
Yeah, our, I mean, our, the original idea was to basically do prototype development tinkering work with solar boats in the Kittredge Cow Barn. That's what kind of started this, but then the idea of doing art and not, not art shows or art sales, but anything type of artistic activities in the barns, and a very light office-type use, again, for just a couple of people, is envisioned as well. But, yeah, that was our, my original use for this. This is beautiful, big empty barn, the Kittredge Farm, which, you know, had something not very pretty for a very long time, that none of us liked, but we liked the people, and we never said anything because the people were nice. So, we want to promote that type of a thing, but something that is fitting with the community and pretty much not noticed.
And it's an opportunity to do true entrepreneurial development here in town in a very low-impact manner. There'd be no activity visible from the outside of the barn, but, you know, you could make an argument that it actually ties to the colonial use of the farm, which was to capture the sun to grow plants, and this is to capture the sun in a 21st-century version to power a vessel.
And so, this is a zoning amendment that changes zoning in the historic overlay district, so, and with...
Historic barn overlay.
Right, that's what it's called, old, old center historic district. So, for now, we're limiting it to that specific district, correct?
Yes.
And that's, that's my question, is it specifically Academy, or it's that historic district?
Old center.
That's the whole center?
Okay.
So, there's not a significant amount of historic barns that would qualify under the, under... the, under the bylaw here, but we did make it broader than just Academy, but anywhere in the old center. I mean, there is the possibility in the future, if this is successful, that maybe it could go to Salem Street, or Johnson Street, or some, or some other places in town, but I think it's important to keep it small.
Yeah.
Simple, well-refined, and very narrow to start. Make sure it works, and then go from there. But it made sense to do it more than just the one location where they're talking about, because there are other potential places on Academy or in the old center that might benefit from this as well. And I think the limitations are pretty well-spelled out in the, in the proposal and the petition of what is allowed and what is specifically not allowed. So, I think it meets, I think it's, like Peter said, I think it's low-impact with potential, real good benefits to anyone who would choose to use this. And it's going to be an overlay, so it doesn't change any of the underlying zoning. It would really be only if someone had this barn, and the building inspector would have to approve that it is a historic barn, then they would have to come for a special permit, tell us what is being proposed, how they're going to do it, who's going to be working there. They, it's, the permit, I believe, is to a specific person at that, at that location, and a specific use. So, it's really tied to a very defined aspect. So, okay, so, go ahead.
So, I kind of have a silly question. Is, like, because a barn is an agricultural structure, at the end of the day, I think, right? So, and I know there's some nuances with respect to building agriculture structures by right, and I'm just curious, like, in other words, can someone build a barn today, wait 50 years?
So, this particular proposed wording is to define it as a former agricultural historic barn.
Okay.
So, it has to be more than 50 years old and a former agricultural barn. So, you could build a horse barn.
Got it.
You have to go before them and get a letter saying they deemed it to be that.
Okay. Okay.
Just minor housekeeping here.
Yeah.
I'm sure Town Commissioner's office can account for it, but the citizen petition calls it Article 20 to amend the zoning bylaw for historic barn. It's Article 20 of the bylaw itself. That Article 20 is whatever, wherever it falls in the warrant.
Yeah.
And so, I'm sure they can fix that, but...
Now, could we, at some point, I guess, could we ask, can we, if we, can we ask Town Council if we were to add that same language that we just had about that the map isn't incorporated and changed? Would we then need a second article?
I can ask her.
Yeah.
But the presumption would be you'd be sponsoring it at some point.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. But, I mean, if, if, if that's a viable, good practice, and I don't see why it wouldn't be, I never, I kind of understood the need for two votes. It seemed kind of silly and just asking for problems. So, if we can make it one vote, that would be even better. Okay. Are there, did we get, receive any public comment about this petition for, online? Are there any members of the public that would wish to speak? Sure. Come up, Sarah.
Yeah, Michael Linehan, 58 Osgood Street. I'm also on the Old Center Historic District Commission, and this did come in front of our commission this past week. Some of the commissioners did have concern about the wording of the proposal, providing more restrictions on homeowners than are there today that do own barns. I do own a home that has a barn on it that has been converted, and it's being used as an art gallery or an art studio. So, some of the wording in here restricting the usage of barns for particular reasons. We'd just like a little more clarity on, you know, what's going away and what is staying.
So, this is an overlay district, meaning it doesn't change the underlying zoning. So, basically, to make use of this zoning, you have to choose to make use of the zoning. So, if you wanted to do something that's allowed under the zoning, you have to submit an application saying, "I'm using the historic barn overlay district to do X," and then go through all the process. If you're not doing that, it doesn't change anything that you're allowed to do now. Now, I can't say that you're allowed to do an art gallery now. I don't know. You may or you may not be. This doesn't change what you're allowed to currently do. So, if you're allowed to do it now, then you're still allowed to do it in the future. If you're not allowed to do it now, this doesn't change it. It just means that you're not allowed to do it right now. So, if the building commissioner could come in today and say, "Hey, you're not allowed to run an art gallery because that's not allowed by our zoning," this doesn't affect that because you didn't choose to go through this process. So, it doesn't change anything that's actually currently allowed. It allows for more uses, but it doesn't take away uses. But it doesn't guarantee, it could be that what, what is happening might not actually be allowed. I don't know.
So, some of the wording in here says that you're not allowed to display anything. If you're not displaying it for a public reason in a retail-type environment, is that saying that you can't display artwork in a barn?
Nope.
Or is it because it's not a retail?
What he's saying is that you're allowed to do that today, and this won't change that. If you're in, the reason why they're coming here is because if it was their own barn, they wouldn't have the problem. But since it's somebody else's barn, we have to put this provision in, so it's additional. So, you can, I think, as Etead said, if, let's assume that your use is allowed, it will still be allowed in the future. This just provides an additional use for somebody that wants to use a barn that they don't own themselves.
That's what I thought, but some of the wording is a little confusing, and it...
It's only related to those people with that third-party use. So, in other words...
And that's not stated.
If somebody wanted to run a barn, let's say...
I don't, I don't think it's necessarily a third-party. Like, if you wanted, if you own the barn and wanted to do the solar menu, the solar production on your own, you couldn't do that today because you can't do manufacturing, or there's light manufacturing in your own barn today because it's not allowed under the zoning.
Okay, well, yeah.
So, it's not as a third-party use. It's that if you're allowed to do it today, you're still going to be allowed to do it, whether it's covered by this, not covered by this, talked about, you're still allowed to do it as long as you're allowed to do it today. This doesn't change what you're allowed, this only allows more uses. It doesn't take away uses.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah.
Because I was, when I was reading some of it in number three on definitions, it wasn't clear to me that it was adding...
Well, it's because, it's because it's an overlay district. So, so, think of an overlay district as now there's two sets of zoning allowed. So, right now, what's allowed in, what's the zoning right now, Jean?
R3.
R3.
Yes.
Right. So, R3 allows for certain things, allows for residential, allows for certain, allows for certain uses. If your use is currently allowed, then it's still going to be allowed. If you wanted to do something that's not allowed today, you would either have to go before the zoning board and get, to get a variance, or now you can go through this process and do one of these things that, that we allow. If it's one of the things that we don't say, then you can't do it if you couldn't already do it today.
Do we, Jean, in any of the overlay districts, do use, like, one of these avoidance-of-doubt things, that all the existing rights still exist? Has that ever been put in there in any of them?
Well, we have, you either choose to come in under this or the underlying. That's...
Yeah. I mean, so effectively, you could say in there that it doesn't eliminate any existing rights that exist today.
There's a provision relationship to underlying zoning.
Yeah.
And it's pretty standard language.
Yeah, it says, which one is it, Jean?
20.3.
20.3. So, it says, it's an overlay district. The standards for use dimensions and other provisions of zoning bylaw governing the underlying zoning district shall remain in full force, except for those sites undergoing proposed uses in accordance with this article. So, unless you come in with a proposal under this article, you just fall under the regular zoning. So, it doesn't change anything that's allowed there currently today.
Do you think it makes any sense for, like, I'm thinking about, like, freaking out about the general public, like, a town meeting has to vote on this. Does it make sense in that relationship to underlying zoning, going beyond whatever's legally correct here to add something for the normal people that says, like, one more sentence that, you know, I don't know how to say it otherwise, but to make that clear again, to make it...
I think, no, I think it's just something you say as part of the presentation, because the one thing I don't want to say is what you're doing now is allowed, because I don't know if, like, let's say, right now, you're running an auto garage out of your barn.
Right.
I, I don't know if that's allowed or not allowed.
Not allowed.
It wouldn't, well, it wouldn't be allowed under this, but is it currently allowed? I don't think so.
No.
Right, I don't think so. But the fact that we're not talking about or saying, just because you're doing it now doesn't mean it's legal or not legal. We're just saying that what this does doesn't change anything that's allowed currently.
But like, this relationship thing doesn't talk about renting it to another party?
No, that's not part of it. I, I don't think it has to.
It's asked, the only thing that this is all covering, right, is renting, because...
No, I don't think so. I don't think so. Not the...
There's a lot of complicated uses that aren't allowed today in R3.
Right. Like, if you own, let's say you bought that, let's say you bought that barn, you could still do it.
Yeah.
Just, like, it wouldn't, I, like, for instance, right, the type of use that you're asking for isn't not, isn't barred by the zoning because of the relationship between owner and, it's because it's a commercial use, which isn't allowed in R3. So, it doesn't matter that you're renting or owning.
Like, the artist studio, all that space, pretty much most of that stuff is probably allowed in your own barn by yourself, like what Mike does in his barn.
Well, you can definitely...
Or what my mom does in my...
You can definitely, I mean, you can definitely hang pictures and stuff like that. It's considered, it's part of your property. That's fine. Whether or not you could, it could be a technical retail studio where you're selling art, or whether you're, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of whether that would apply on the zoning.
I think that's not allowed in R3, and it's not allowed by the overlay.
Right. If it's not allowed at R3, then it's not allowed now. If it is allowed, then it is allowed. But this doesn't change anything.
My argument is the specific wording in sentence number three, where it says, "Retail sales or display of art produced by, on the premises by the artist are not allowable accessory uses." So, if you want to change that and remove something where, or say, "Retail display," because it's...
No, but it doesn't apply to, unless you're, unless you got a permit under this statute, it doesn't apply to you.
So, why is it put in here at all?
Because we don't want people who come in under this permit running art galleries.
The definition you're looking at here, the one you specifically mentioned.
Yeah.
Only applies, that definition only applies to someone who wants a permit to use it as the overlay district. Any definition in here does not apply to your current allowable use.
Is an art gallery allowed under R3? I assume not.
I was definitely going, no.
Right. So, I don't think an art gallery is an allowed use currently.
The term "gallery" is a form of retail display versus a studio where the artist can actually create.
Correct.
And have their own, so, maybe there's some specificity.
The sentence begins, "By it is for the creation of any visual art or craft, including..."
Yeah.
It's specific to the creation. That's what the intent of the use is.
Which is probably the same as R3. The difference is you can rent this to another artist and have him pay money to be in your barn with you, or not. You can be in the house, he can be in the barn, you can both be in the barn.
So, that's rent, that's renting space in the barn.
And it doesn't really say that anywhere here about the third-party renting.
It doesn't. No.
That's the only thing that I'm...
It says "commercial."
Okay, that's what "commercial" means.
I don't think it matters. Yeah, I don't...
As long as that's the case.
Yeah.
It may concern other people that the wording is not as specific.
Again, I, I would, I would say, no one should be concerned that this bylaw changes what you're allowed to do right now. It only allows...
That was the entire concern of the commission.
Yes. No.
So, the wording was written in such a way that it concerns folks. So, I think something clarifying that would be helpful.
Okay. Well, I mean, yeah, it's a, okay, okay. Yeah. Maybe someone, if, maybe we can have an offline conversation. I can assuage that anyone that it doesn't affect what people are allowed to do.
Peter just pointed out to me the very first line, the purpose, "for commercial use."
Right.
That's what this is about. And "commercial use" means trading of money or something. And that's not what you do in an R3. There's no trading of money, other than the guy that owes you a loan or owns your oil. Wait, we don't do that anymore.
Right.
But that, it is...
The purpose of this is to allow for more, not to take away.
Right.
Not to take away.
So, I just, one thought that kind of popped in my head is that, I don't know if you should add to the bylaw or not, or if we're being too prescriptive, but is there a scenario where someone could subdivide the lot through an A and R to sell just the barn? And if that's the case, should we...
What?
Like, I'm just concerned with, like, I mean, I don't know if it's within, within the spirit of what...
It would be extremely difficult to do. I mean, there are probably only eight or ten houses in any location of barns on the property, and the ability to carve them out is virtually impossible.
Okay.
I mean, because they're, they're either going to have a weird orientation of the street, or they're going to be so close to the existing house, you couldn't carve them off, so...
And now, the boundary line is right at the structure.
Oh, God, yeah, you're right.
So, you can see here, the subject lot is this one.
Yep.
And the barn is almost connected to the house itself, and the boundary is right at it.
Got it.
It's not property line to property line.
Okay. All right. So, we'll continue this, we'll continue this till March 19th, and then hopefully, if we go to April 3rd, 2nd?
2nd.
I keep forgetting, April 2nd. Then, if everyone's content, if we don't have any issues that we need to clear up, then hopefully we can take it on as a planning board sponsor articles. Again, I'd like to just make sure that there's no issues from the public or questions that we haven't answered. Okay. Anything else? Great.
Thank you.
Do we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 20th?
Subpo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I have a quick discussion item.
Uh, okay.
That's okay?
And then I have one. Yes, yes, go ahead.
Well, please go first. You're the...
Okay, I just want to wish my twins a happy birthday. Happy birthday, Ben and Ryan. That's it.
Are they watching?
No, not yet. But now, now that they know that they're mentioned, maybe they'll go back and turn it on.
So, I attended a presentation at the Historical Society about net geothermal energy, and I just want to mention it to the board. In the event, we want to kind of pick it up a little bit. And I didn't know what it was, but there's the potential for grant money, perhaps for a town like North Andover. So, net geo is a series of shallow boreholes and a pipe in a neighborhood to provide geothermal energy. And you don't need to be like Iceland and get to the lava. They're fairly shallow, stable 55-degree temperature, and a utility puts in this pipe and the shallow boreholes. And the idea is that in many places of the country, and we know this better than any place, the natural gas pipelines are nearing or pass the end of their life. They have to be replaced anyway. So, the idea is that if a utility is digging up a street to replace a natural gas line, instead, put in a geothermal energy line that will provide a collective source of water to then run a heat pump off. So, Eversource is piloting one of these in Framingham in a neighborhood for about 140 houses, and it's going to be ready in April next month. There's also a prototype in Lowell and one other, I, somewhere in the Boston area, that utilities are prototyping. So, you use this water from shallow boreholes to run a heat pump, and the data seems to show that it's about a third the annual cost for providing both heating and cooling.
So, if the economic...
And here's the punchline. The state is offering $4 million grant from the Columbia Gas Settlement for a site that provides mixed-energy use to include some low-income houses. And if this is appealing, I wonder if perhaps the town could possibly look at this $4 million grant. So, instead of just Framingham and Lowell, maybe we could try it here. That, that's the discussion point I wanted to raise. This is not a full discussion. This is not a full description.
Did they talk anything about, like, so like, my neighborhood doesn't have natural gas, we're all on oil, about putting them down, not replacing, but just to take away from oil?
They did, they did talk about it, but they really talked about sort of the moment of opportunity over the course of 20, 30, 40 years. Kind of the moment is ripe now because you got to dig up streets. Now, North Andover's already dug up some streets, but not for every pipeline. What it's trying to say is that if you want to use geothermal, every homeowner digging their, drilling their own line is a really expensive way to do it. And the term "net" means "networked," just like a natural gas system. It'd be crazy for a homeowner to run their own pipeline for natural gas. And it seemed like an intriguing idea, and that's all it was, until they got to the last slide where they said, "And there's a $4 million grant in the state. Jeez, we know something about digging up streets, maybe we ought to compete for that."
We should make sure that we're in MBGA communities compliance so that we can get grants.
Yeah.
But John, you had a question?
I guess I was going to be a little snarky, but if the economics were so compelling, why do we need subsidies?
I think to give people a chance to see, holy cow, this really works. Oh, the other thing the presentation noted was, the pilot projects has also been done and are working in Toronto, so they work in cold climates. And people ask, can a heat pump work in cold climates? And in San Antonio, so they work in hot climates.
James?
I could add that I, my house for 14 years has had geothermal, and it's powered by the solar cells onboard in the yard. And the Stevens Center, when you walk in there and have a latte at the cafe, that whole place is now geothermal, and it's all powered by the solar cells. You see on the roof that the Historic District Commission approved, amazingly enough. And so those are Peter's example of an individual building having it. And although the payback is 10 or 12 years to do it individually, it, the money you mint later is really great because you pay nothing for any energy, for heat. This is heat, light, power, everything, if you have solar and geo, so putting the two together is really exciting. As a network, you get this bigger bang for the buck because you're sharing a bunch of different needs of hot and cold, for hot water and air conditioning and heat, and over several buildings or a whole community, 20, 30 buildings, it could be some municipal buildings, some stores, some houses, a hotel, whatever, and you get to have a much better flowing around the energy. But it's a big system. Doing a house or a building is very simple, you just do it, but it's individually expensive for that one person, so...
The idea is to lower the cost per house if it's a network system, but...
Oh, I understand that. I mean, there's, I get that there's scale economies, and there's natural monopolies and all that sort of stuff. My point ends up being is, I don't want this to be a first of a gravy trade for billions of dollars in subsidies for something that's not economical. And if it's, if it's, the economics are compelling, it should be able to work on the market. That's my only point.
I think it's a fair point, John, except I think in this case, the subsidy, from my perspective, is not being used to create billions in subsidies. It's being used to introduce people to the fact that, holy cow, this actually works. And then, it's really, in order to make this work, a utility has to adopt it.
Yeah, I mean, I...
And that's where the economics are.
For me, where, it seems to me, I'd like to see something like this more as, like, almost a prize. You know how, like, prices are a big thing these days?
Yeah.
We're going to give you a million-dollar prize if you come up with the best solution to this problem. It seems to me that that's a better approach to something like this.
I agree. I would rather see that, but I didn't design this. And rather than say, on principle, you know, we don't want it, it should go to someone else, and then that's bad behavior for them. I mean, the grant's already been designed.
I should put out there for full disclosure, Gloucester where I work has been awarded the heat grant to study a geothermal system in this small cluster of buildings, so I'm not sure if that makes me have any kind of conflict of interest.
Well, you guys are doing it, right?
We're studying it.
Okay. Well, we'd like to know if...
You're an expert on it, so...
It's still open for computing.
Possibly will be an expert.
If I was designing the grant as public policy, I would, I would definitely say, let's do it as a prize.
You're right in the sense that, hey, if it's out there, you might as well go for it if you can. I mean, but it's, here's an idea, take the $4 million, give it back to the Columbia Gas customers, and let them use it.
This is from the Columbia Gas Settlement.
No, I'm talking about give it back to the customers as a... And I'm doing it as a posture. It's that, you know, if I get it, new things, they need to get juiced, and...
I agree with you on principle. I'd rather see it as a prize.
Yeah.
But I don't think we can change this, this particular $4 million grant, but it's a great point.
And, and I mean, you know, something like this you can get behind because the externalities have to be a lot less than, like, pipelines and things like that, and, you know...
It's still a pipe, which is almost exactly the same as a natural gas pipe, so if a utility has the ability and machinery to lay a new natural gas pipe...
It's local, though, right? I mean, you don't have the major gas pipelines or anything like that.
You don't have to run it down to the Boston LNG terminal or to Texas.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Also, it really wouldn't be fun, like, this grant is really not even close to enough to fund a network geothermal system. What the Department of Public Utilities has given permission to utilities to do, National Grid and Eversource, is do, run a pilot program, which would be paid for by the utilities, and the utilities are essentially trying to make their own business case that they could eventually start looking at this as a solution to some of the issues we have with our gas network. So it would, it is, in my view, coming from the private sector as it is, and the state is potentially piggybacking on it and saying...
I guess if they're worried that they have to pay the money to use it for something like this, then somebody else, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, interesting. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bye-bye.